I'm going to call the meeting to order. President Denise Luciano, Governor Morrison, Kevin Schneider, myself, Alec Rich. Let's start with the pledging of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first off, we've had a rough couple of weeks with some people, prominent people in the community that have left us, one of them being Scott Sweeney, a member of the police department. And any of you that have known him knew what a great guy he was. And the last I heard Jase had had a team. I'd like to invite Chief Clark to come up and say a few words.
Good evening. Yeah, so, you know, Scott retired in March after 28 years of service, and he was certainly a dedicated individual when it comes to community policing. He was involved in the DAB program. I think one of the big things about Scott is he didn't come from Norton, but he made Norton his own community. Everybody knew him in town. You know, when you talk about community policing, he was the guy that knew what was going on. He made like almost his life mission to make sure that the kids made good decisions. So you could stop and see him, talk to him, very engaged in the community, really loved the town of Norton and embraced it. He was also one of those guys that loved joking around. It's funny, when we went through the wake, probably the only fun thing is a couple of pictures, you know, and you know he probably did try to get on the mic a little bit, but he has a picture of himself like pretending to sleep in a cruiser or pretending to sleep on the front desk. It's just the way he is, so he certainly will be missed. Everybody would like to look up him down the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We also, last someone that was close to me, so forgive me if, Chris O'Brien, he was the boss of the baseball coach for a while. Anybody that's involved in the community sports know you create your own family within that sport. And he was only 52 years old, unexpected, obviously. The guy had a huge heart. He was one of the most dedicated guys I've ever seen over the past 19 years that I've been involved with baseball. He leaves his wife Sharon, his daughter Sarah, and two boys that are active in the military now, one in the army and one in the navy. And just another huge loss. The baseball community is really hurt from it. So just want to have a moment of silence for Scott and Chris, please. Thank you, everyone. So next we have appointment of Wendy Cockman as tax collector, treasurer. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening. Thank you for having me come here and the opportunity to be your new treasurer collector. A little bit about my past, if you haven't seen, I've served in the town of Berkeley since 2001 as the tax collector, but prior to that I was the assistant town accountant. In 2014, I ran for selectmen, and I was a selectman for 10 years in the town of Berkeley. And in 2015, I ran for treasurer. So I was treasurer collector and selectman for nine years, all the way. I live at home. I have a husband that I've been married to for 44 years, and I have three beautiful daughters, the Marises. And I'm looking forward to the challenges I have. She took the, you're losing an amazing treasurer collector, and I knew that before, but I know it more than how working side by side. And I can't thank her enough for all the generosity she's given me and shown me the ropes. I knew stuff, and I have the same reports, but larger numbers than I have in the little town of Berkeley, but I'm looking forward to the challenge and hopefully I don't disappoint you.
I don't think so. I think you'll be fine. You'll pick shoes to fill, but it sounds like your experience here.
Well, it was one of the best things is that our software in Berkeley was the same software that you use, so it's just bigger than this. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So we're looking for...
Do we need to do a motion to appoint?
Usually just, yeah, you read the letter and accept it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before we do that, just want to thank Paula also for all of her service, her years of service here as well, and we're going to move on.
Yes, thank you, Paula.
You still have your cell phone.
Mr. Clark, you want to read that?
Sure. Let's see. What do you want me to read from, Mike? Notice of appointment of the tax collector. Make a motion that we appoint Wendy Cockman as a tax collector. The... I don't even understand that specifically. Right? Said appointment was made on September 4th, 2024 in accordance with the provisions of the Norton Charter and will be effective September 19th, 2024 unless the select board votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date. I specifically request the board's acceptance of this appointment with an effective date of September 13th, 2024 at 12:01.
Just change that to Monday's date.
What's Monday's date?
14, 16.
Thank you.
Revision to September 16th, 2024 at 12:01.
Second. Oh, Denise.
Yes?
Roger?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paula.
Okay.
Next one, we have an appointment of a new town clerk.
Hi, my name is Jill Sepa. I spent most of my professional life on Black Island, Alamo Island, and most recently served in East Providence. I relocated to Rethan, Massachusetts recently, and I'm looking forward to serving here in Norton. And I stopped by earlier today to fill out my paperwork, and I'm just as anxious, I think, as everybody after being there for three hours for the new roof and the new building, and I can only imagine how ready everybody is for that. So I look forward to assisting and serving in town of Norton.
Great. Wonderful. Anybody have questions?
Just, you a town clerk in Black Island, East Providence?
I worked in the clerk's office as an assistant in Black Island and the city clerk in East Providence, yes.
I don't have a letter to read for this.
Yes, you do.
Let's see. If I notify the select board in accordance with the provisions of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter that acting in my full capacity as appointed authority, I have appointed following individual as full-time town clerk, Jill Sepa. The appointment was made on September 11th, 2024 in accordance with the provisions of the Norton Town Charter and will be effective September 26th, 2024 unless the select board votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to said date.
A second. So is that a motion?
Motion to, yeah.
Motion to appoint?
To appoint, yeah.
Okay. Take a vote, Denise?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
All right. Congrats, welcome.
Congratulations.
Good luck. There's not a lot of stuff coming up. Nothing coming up. Don't say it soon.
Okay, next we have another appointment, Nicholas Dyer as a permanent full-time lieutenant in the Norton Fire Department.
Good evening. How are you doing? So we're just here to request appointment of firefighter Di at the position of lieutenant. This is a fill of vacancy created by the retirement of firefighter Crowley. He served out of the department for 28 years and just recently retired. Firefighter Di has been a member of our department for 10 years. He's also our assistant mechanic and one of our fire lab technicians. He's married, four children. He has many family members that work in emergency services. His father is here with us tonight. He's retired fire chief from Brangery. He has two brothers in the fire service and a sister who's a nurse. Firefighter Di is an excellent firefighter. He does a lot to help our department, and I have no doubt continue to excel as a firefighter lieutenant.
Wonderful. Any questions?
Thank you.
Keep going. Okay. I make a motion that we appoint Nicholas Dyer a full-time lieutenant on the Norton Fire Department. This appointment was made September 5th, 2024, will be effective on September 20th, 2024 unless the select board votes to accept or reject the appointment to this said date.
That is September 13th, no. Specifically request the board's acceptance.
Specifically request.
September 13th or the 20th?
13th, yes.
13th, sorry. 13th.
A second, the amended motion.
Okay. Take a vote, Denise?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Chief.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Come on.
Okay. Who's next here? Who's next? All right. Next we have an appointment of Jonathan D. Goodwin as full-time civil service deputy chief.
Good evening again. So as you know, Clyde Jackson is retiring on the 17th after 30 years of service with the town of Norton, and that creates a vacancy in the deputy chief position, and then it's kind of a domino effect from there. So tonight, I come before you ask you appoint Jonathan Goodwin to the position of deputy chief, Kevin Schlecker to the position of police lieutenant, and Sean Mahoney to the position of police sergeant. Lieutenant Goodwin is a 28-year member of the police department. He's been lieutenant for two years and sergeant before that for 14 years. He should have served on various shifts. He's a member of the traffic safety committee. He's completed the FBI trilogy program, has a master's degree in criminal justice, and has also been assisting with the elder affairs and elder services for the police department. Sergeant Kevin Schlecker is a 17-year member of the police department. He's a field training officer, also assisted with our department accreditation. He has a master's degree and is also enrolled in another master's program at the University of Virginia, and he's a recent graduate of the prestigious FBI National Academy. And Sean Mahoney, he's an eight-year member of the police department, and he worked two years before that with Tufts University. He is a member of our problem-oriented policing team. He's also a field training officer. He also has a master's degree, and he's actually about to graduate from law school. So, okay, sent me a day of resume in his time. I should have...
We'll take these one at a time and get it taken care of.
Yep. Anybody have any questions? No?
No. Thank you, gentlemen.
You?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we appoint Jonathan D. Goodwin as a full-time civil service deputy chief of police. Said appointment was made on September 4th, 2024 in accordance with the provisions of the Norton Charter and will be effective September 19th, 2024 unless the board votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date. However, I specifically request the board's acceptance of this appointment with an effective date of November 17th, 2024.
A second.
Take a vote, Denise?
Oh, sorry, yes, yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Congratulations, Sean.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we appoint Kevin K. Schlecker Jr., full-time civil service police lieutenant. Said appointment was made on September 4th, 2024 in accordance with provisions of the Norton Charter and will be effective September 19th, 2024 unless the board votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date. However, I specifically request the board's acceptance of this appointment with an effective date of November 17th, 2024.
A second.
Motion and a second. Denise?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we appoint Sean P. Mahoney, full-time civil service police sergeant. Said appointment was made on September 4th, 2024 in accordance with provisions of the Norton Charter and will be effective September 19th, 2024 unless the board, select board votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date. However, I specifically request the board's acceptance of this appointment with an effective date of November 17th, 2024.
A second.
Motion and a second. Denise?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Very quickly, we just noted, so we, you know, the fact we see this is going to be accepted, unforeseen retirement in a little over two months, so we're looking to back to one of those positions that I hope to come to employ in a couple of weeks. So one's gonna, one will have to be...
Okay. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for your attendance.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the August 15th, 2024 public and executive sessions and the August 29th, 2024 public and executive sessions.
A second.
Motion and a second.
Yes.
Denise? Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the August 15th, 2024 public and executive sessions and the August 29th, 2024 public and executive sessions.
A second.
Motion and a second.
Yes.
Denise? Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Dr.?
Good.
What do we do now, says the licenses?
Mr. Chair, so is there an after we know that?
Oh, wait a minute. No, do we have to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, time's running. All right. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on the application of TJP Dining LLC doing business as The Spot manager Thomas G. N. Francesco for a new Section 12 common vic license to expose, keep for sale, and sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises at 130 Mansfield Avenue in Norton, Massachusetts.
Just do the end of the story, right?
Yes. So that was just the motion to open the...
Oh, second, sorry.
I think it might be sort of good for the public hearing for the... Is that a public hearing or is that just a...
No, that's just, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is it a second?
Yeah.
Motion and a second.
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Introduce yourself.
My name's TJ Thomas J. Francesco from Rethan, Massachusetts. Very nice to meet you.
You're a associate?
With Patrick Chung.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We're looking forward to coming to Norton, you know, looking to open a family-friendly pub-style restaurant. I own Parkers Pub in Rethan, Massachusetts. We're used to the community sports, sponsoring used sports teams, kind of what we're trying to do in Norton as well.
Good. How's it coming?
It's good, it's good. Slow like anything else, you know? One contract is late, the other contract is, you know, false money, but it's good, yeah. Yeah.
Do you have a hopeful opening?
I'd love to say maybe sometime in October if that's feasible, but, you know, honestly, whenever it happens.
And how, have you started hiring?
A little bit, a little bit. Not too much, only because we don't want to hire people and have them wait that long. We have some people on the burner, but kind of holding up to hire a lot of like the part-time help until we have a firm opening gate.
What's projected? If you already said it, excuse me.
Yeah, we're hoping for October possibly, but again, that's, that looks like it might get pushed back a little bit almost into November, so.
I'm sure you want to get as much of football season as possible.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. I don't know if anyone's invited, put up 40 TVs, it'd be great, great place to watch games.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, good. Everything signed off?
No, I would make the approval subject to all final sign-ups because they're still working on the building.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the license application of TJP Dining LLC doing business as The Spot for a common vicular license subject to all permits and necessary signatures.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just, do we need to close the public hearing before we take the motion? Is that right? Okay.
Got you.
Okay. And just might want to ask if anybody here...
Anybody in the audience that'd like to speak about it? No? Any questions?
All right. All right. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sorry.
Okay. Motion.
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I will, yeah. I will make a motion to approve the application of TJP Dining LLC doing business as The Spot manager Thomas G. N. Francesco at 130 Mansfield Avenue, Norton, Massachusetts.
Pending.
Sorry, pending approval from...
All final sign-offs?
All final sign-offs.
Second.
Motion and a second. Denise?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Want something good in that spot? That spot.
It's that spot.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Very lucky. Thank you so much.
So next we have an update on the compliance of New England Rodeo LLC in accordance with the correction order issued by the inspections Department.
Can you wait five minutes?
Mr. Chair.
Is it?
Would you like me to do a couple of announcements?
That'd be great. Sure.
So we do have a couple of announcements. We have Norton's annual Charlie Halloween Parade from, put on by the town of Norton Recreation Department. This year's the 31st Annual Halloween Parade being held on Sunday, October 27th, starting at noon along the traditional route down Route 123 from the Adelboro Line to Power Street Norton Middle School. I hope to have everyone join them once again. The parade goes rain or shine, so cross your fingers for nice weather. It rained last year, it didn't seem to slow down the amount of people that showed up. The parade draws upwards of 3,000 people from Norton and the surrounding area and is a much beloved community event. We invite the Parks and Rec Department, invite you and your family members to join and make the day a success. There is a flyer that goes along with that, if anybody would like to see it, and it's online, and you can, I think they're going to be going live soon to register whether you want to have a float or you want to march in the parade. We also have an announcement from the Norton Fire Department. On Sunday, September 29th, 2024, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., you can come and see the apparatus and meet the firefighters on the Norton Fire Department. Refreshments and snacks will be served. Other apparatus on display, Norton Emergency Management, Bristol County Technical Rescue, Bristol North Regional Dive Team, and safe trailer. So there's a flyer for that as well, if anybody wants to take part in that.
Okay. Still have a few minutes we got to wait. Any other announcements?
I don't.
The clerk? Denise?
I don't have any announcements. I could try to make something up, though, if I could kill time.
What are you dressing up as?
I don't know what I'm going to do this year.
I don't know. So we could wait till six to eight for the update on the compliance of...
I don't think we have to. I think we can go forward.
Jump on in?
Yeah. Okay.
All right. So next is the update on the compliance of New England Rodeo LLC in accordance with the correction order issued by the inspections Department.
Need to open the public hearing first?
There's no public hearing.
It's just here, the public hearing.
Where?
The agenda. No?
I think that's, I think that may be an old agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Good evening. Mr. Nick, how are you? Are you excited?
All right.
Good, thank you. So, quick background, I think everybody should be familiar, only two weeks ago we were running guys with some concerns about the rodeo and the bleachers, some trailers on site for public attendance in the event staffing. So, not so much the staffing, but the occupants at the events. After that meeting on the 30th through town council, I issued the correction order on that Friday, it was the 30th. And since we have gotten back the, what I'm going to call the initial review, we took any consideration of bleachers and the trailers, but did not take any consideration of barn where the stage and the mechanical hole are. There's also some questions up in the air about the kitchen and even the announcer booth that's kind of up on stilts. But nonetheless, talked to Kelly yesterday, who's their representative over the phone, and basically, there's some, there's some things that need to be fixed. Kelly and I were in agreement that the trailers were just going to be off limits. Basically, there's some rotted areas of the trailers. The architects of the structures here have wanted them to be blocked off. Kelly said instead of doing that, we're just going to try to eliminate them for the remainder of the season. As far as the bleachers are concerned, in the telescopic, the metal bleachers, there's just some shoring up that needs to get done. I don't know when she's planning on doing that. We didn't, she didn't tell me that, but my, what I told her was, I said, last weekend you operated with no trailers and just bleachers. This weekend having this analysis, my opinion and talking to the other department heads that are involved in this is we can stay status quo the same way. Trailers off limits, barns off limits, bleachers only for the most part. She didn't have an objection to that. I believe there's three weeks left in their season. Their last event is the 28th or the 29th, the last Saturday of the month, I believe it is. So she did tell me, again, this is all the phone, that basically they're not looking to do their big resilient event this year, because this will be the last event, so there will be a little bit of an extended event with trophies or awards headed out at the end and stuff like that. I don't know capacity numbers that she's expecting, if it's expected to be a larger number or not. So basically, what their architect or engineer came back with for a review, if you take the trailers out of it, we just use the bleachers as a count, get approximately 461 people that could occupy those bleachers based off of the numbers that I was provided. So as of now, I'm comfortable with that on my end. Going forward this weekend, and I asked if we just touch base at some point, beginning of the first half of next week, to come up with a game plan to kind of get some of this stuff in motion and go from there. With it only being three weeks left, I think I'm willing to work with her and at least keep it safe this way. We can do the shoring and the bleachers, and then we'll work towards, like we talked about, a certified parking plan and a little bit more work on the, on the trails and stuff. They want to use it for next year, but I think most of us are fairly comfortable with this number and kind of, I don't want to call them restrictions, but we'll call them restrictions for the rest of the season. That's what we got.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So the, so, thanks, then. So the goal would be get through this season with some restrictions, but then have the parking plan, the structural review, any repairs and everything else ready to go for them prior to start of that season.
Yeah, my suggestion would be prior to licensing.
Yeah, right.
Right? Licensing is technically is January 1st.
Yeah.
So we'll have to work with them. So, we'll have to work with it, we think you're gonna have to get a common license contractor involved for some of this stuff.
I mean, I like that even better, so.
Yeah.
Before the license comes up for the Noel.
Yeah, and that's, I, in my opinion, that's how it should be, right? We shouldn't, that's.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I don't know at this point where the kitchens, what the kitchen's gonna look like, what that announcer booth is gonna look like as far as what's gonna have to get done, right? That area with the mechanical hole in the stage, I don't know what's gonna have to get done, um, that hopefully will come down the line. So their, their initial contract and talks with yesterday covered basically what she provided me with. So they could go back and she said she talked to the, to the firm yesterday, go back, redesign a new contract for the additional work that we're looking for. That was in the letter. And then get back to us with some type of information at that point and we'll deal with it, but I think we're comfortable, you know, if we keep the restrictions that I spoke about. And let them get through the next three weeks hopefully safely like it has been, you know, since they've been operational. One thing I do want to mention, and I don't know if they, she was talking about maybe coming to the meeting and she can maybe allude to it a little bit more, but I did get a call from the owner of the property this afternoon. And uh, it was brought to my attention that they don't, there's no long term lease on that property from them, they leased that property, they don't. They're under essentially a month to month agreement, so I don't know what the plans are. You know, as far as the owner of the property and the rodeo moving forward. But um, I think, you know, talking to Kelly and hopefully we can get through to a, a comfortable spot where they get through September and we can, you know, regroup and see what happens come the fall and with the time.
Any other questions?
Did she happen to mention how they're gonna plan to control the crowd size to that four hundred and sixty one head count or whatever?
She did not, she did not, I mean, we can, um, again, I, she was, I think she was planning on coming, I don't know if they got tied up or not, which is fine, I can reach out, I have tomorrow to talk to her.
Yeah.
You know, that's something we can consider, maybe myself and through the, the chief of the fire department, the police department tomorrow, or their representatives come up with a game plan, whether it's, you know, they only get four hundred and sixty one tickets to sell.
Yeah.
And they need to track that, um, I don't think that's a bad idea.
Yeah.
Right? We also have to remember that four hundred and sixty one, um, that's total, I'm, I'm gonna base total occupants of that event. So we're gonna, I'm looking at that as riders, I'm looking at that as event staff, and I'm looking at that as, as attendance.
Right.
For now, for the, for the next three weeks, that's all, that's, that's what I would be comfortable with.
Yeah.
But yeah, we can have that discussion if, if you're comfortable with that, you know, I have no problem talking to the chief clerk and chief Simmons or, like I said, their reps and, and coming up with a game plan and stuff. Probably want to facilitate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We trust your judgment, a hundred percent on it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, have a good night. You too.
Out of order a little bit, next, we're gonna have a, another license and permit. We do discuss in our vote to approve the application of PH Norton Inc., DBA Downtown Public House for the following licenses. Common Vicula, Live Entertainment and Sunday Entertainment. Is anybody here?
No.
Come on down. I went a little out of order, I apologize.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mike. Welcome, welcome.
My name is Glenn Stowers, uh, I own the, uh, downtown, the new downtown.
The downtown.
The downtown. Uh, we changed it to the public house to give it a little bit of definition and uh, we're trying to, we're working real hard on the building and uh, looking forward to getting open. Norton, our liquor license was passed by you folks back in July. Uh, and the A D C C's still working through that, so uh, it's good to hear the spot. Guys got their, their thing going now. It'll be an exciting time if everybody gets going, it'll be a lot of fun.
Good. When's your projected date of opening?
You know, you can't really, can't really lock it down until the licenses are in place and, and the liquor license is one of the keys. You can't print anything, you can't advertise anything. And I, I have a little bit more work to do, uh, to get through the, the, the rest of, of what needed to be done.
So that was, I was gonna rephrase my question. How much work is left to be done? What's the timeline for the rest of the work to be done and then?
Uh, I think TJ Scott put it well, you know, contractors come and go, uh, they don't seem to work in unison, you get one at a time.
It's different now.
It's a little different. So, uh, you know, we're working at it every day. We're trying to do something positive, some, some movement, some, move something forward every day.
So let me rephrase that again, when do you want to open?
I'd like to open before November. I'd love to hit Halloween.
Get the holiday season in?
Halloween would be a great.
Yeah.
If, believe it or not, we can't buy tables.
What?
Tables.
Really? It's somewhere in there.
Bring them down, everybody brings a chair.
You might check with the Old Town Hall, they get a couple too.
There'd be surplus and some stuff, yeah. Okay, well.
You're gonna be doing a lot of drinking after.
Yeah. So yeah, you're gonna have the uh, the parade's gonna go right by your front door.
Well, if we're not open, we'll all be out there.
That probably was packed.
Good? Like that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion um, to um, approve the application of PH Norton, DBA Downtown Public House for the following licenses, Common Vicula, Live Entertainment and Sunday Entertainment.
Second. Second with uh,
Subject to all sign offs?
Subject to all sign offs and all permitting.
Yep, I think those are all done now, right, Mike? On this one?
No.
No, okay.
And I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, they're still, still in the construction.
Yes.
Yeah, all right. It's my fault, I just can't read the paper.
No, it's fine, and again, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, subject to all permits being signed and completed.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to let Brother say.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion in a second, Denise? Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Good luck with the timeline of the tables.
Thank you.
Yeah.
They had to be, you know.
We did.
Yeah. Has it been?
That was the public, that was the.
That was the public hearing for liquor license, this is part of the common.
So we only need public hearings for liquor? Gotcha. Been here for two and a half years, so we need to have.
Bill Chair.
Yes, sir.
I uh, make a motion that we approve the application of TJP Dining LLC doing business as the spot for a common vicular license, subject to all permits being signed and completed.
Second.
Motion in a second, Denise? Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Where is it at? I don't see it on here.
Where were we here?
As the.
Chief, okay. Discussion in our vote to approve the Town of Norton Mass Hazard Mitigation Plan. Chief Simmons.
Again.
How are you, sir?
Um, so a, as y'all know, we've been working on that plan since last September. We just recently completed it, uh, with assistance of a sixteen member, uh, kind of multi-faceted planning group to be had in addition to our consulting, uh, that was funded through a grant that we were able to secure. So the goal of the plan is to reduce the loss of life and property due to natural hazards. The plan's three hundred and forty nine pages long and it, it just covers a multitude of uh, different hazards, everything that you could possibly imagine, so. An additional benefit of having the plan is it qualifies us to receive grants to help implement mitigation objectives through the plan. So uh, that's, that's huge on the force. FEMA and NEMA have both approved the plan and uh, the last step is, is here tonight, is best requesting that the Slum Board adopts uh, the plan for the town.
Any questions?
And one quick question.
Sure.
Uh, there's a number of opportunities listed after each section, do you take those and create some sort of plan going forward? There's an opportunity that they, opportunities, who would be that they listed on there?
Yeah, the plan is broken down into several, several areas, right? Each, each mitigation action has um, a listing of who would be responsible, to be the lead, lead person, lead agency for that. And then how to go about it, the cost of it, it's all kind of broken down section by section for each thing that was identified throughout the. Yeah, exactly, so the next step would be at some point, um, hopefully in the future, we need futures to get that together with the committee and kind of start kind of plan a way forward uh, to, to do that.
Great, thanks.
And then start looking for those grant opportunities and stuff.
Did you do those with, uh, in concert with, uh, planner, Paul?
It would, it, most of the actions that we come up with kind of fall under um, conservation, um, public works stuff, you know, there's, there's a few of them that fall under me, of course, I'm happy to help with it. Because we're kind of a team, we got, except sixty people, a bunch of the board heads, town employees, stakeholders, college, um, and stuff like that too, so we'll all work together on it.
Good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we approve the Town of Norton Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Motion in a second, Denise? Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
That was a lot of work, thank you very much.
It's good for us.
It is good.
Next up. We do discuss in a vote, or, and or vote to approve the amendment, amendment to the host community agreement between the Town of Norton and Lucky Green Ladies four oh eight LLC.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So in your packet, you can see we received a letter from uh, CCC indicating that there were a number of items in our HCA that were in violation of their current regulations. Town Council went through um, the requests and made amendments that were also agreed to by Lucky Green Ladies Attorney. And uh, in your packet and the signature in the bin was the amended agreement that was agreed to by everybody.
Okay. Does he have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we approve the amendment to the host community agreement between the Town of Norton and Lucky Green Ladies eight oh, four oh eight LLC.
Motion in a second, Denise?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Let's see, the next item, uh, five, we have K P Law, because we have not received, uh, per last meeting, we were waiting for guidance from K P Law. And we have not received that yet. So, we will go right to number six, we do discuss in our vote on fault annual town meeting articles list.
So you have the list of articles in your packet, um, and a lot of them are standard unpaid bills, separation expense. Then there's a bylaw amendment for the personnel bylaws, operating budget amendments, water operating budget amendments, sewer operating budget amendments, capital improvement funding, capital plan amendments, engineering study or design service for drainage improvements. A placeholder uh, here is Article ten, that's for repurpose of article funds. That, various articles that have money remaining in them for um, the senior center and town hall projects. Twelve Hill Street, um, the assessor is working with the developer of, of that solar farm there for, on a pilot agreement. The Norton Middle School will be coming forward with the dollar amount for schematic design for the Norton Middle School roof. The roof is now twenty five years old, so it, it's old enough to be in the MSBA accelerated repair program.
That's a one for one reimbursement?
The reimbursements are both, I think fifty six percent. So a little more than fifty percent. Then um, Article thirteen is for the demolition, removal, reconstruction of exterior wall, site restoration. And together with incidentals related there too of a portion of the former town hall. That has to do, we're still waiting on a final number from um, the contractor on the demolition of the town hall. And this would be if any further funds are needed. Fourteen is uh, well, I know we went through this uh, before the main town meeting, the Elm Street Water and Sewer Improvement Project. Fifteen would be uh, a borrowing for a Title V Community Septic Loan Program, that'll come from the treasurer. Sixteen, uh, the highway superintendent is working with a developer on Pine Street, who's being very cooperative with them. He wants to just make a curb safer on Pine Street where this developer is getting ready to develop, so they're working on a, a plan for that. Lake and Pond Management, we're reviewing that to see if we need any money um, in the Lake and Pond Management Program for next year, next spring's program. Eighteen is uh, something that you discussed previously and was submitted as a petition article for an easement to North Town Properties. Going across property at eighty five West Main Street. The next one is a bylaw amendment that's for the annual election that you were talking about, so we have to come up with something on that. The Article twenty and twenty one both have to do with um, the Great Woods Overlay District. More or less the MBTA Housing District, which is um, on one forty. It is the area out in front of the TPC that's vacant right now, next to New England Ice Cream and uh, parcels across the street where all the duplexes are, more or less. Twenty one is just to amend the map. Twenty two is um, OPEB and twenty three is stabilization, so other post employment benefits is twenty two and stabilization is twenty three. And I ask that you refer um, Article twenty and Article twenty one to the planning board for their study.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we refer Article twenty and twenty one back to the planning board for further study.
Second.
Motion in a second, Denise?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Anything else on that? Okay. Next item, discussion on discolored water, complaints, water quality issues and P pass treatment. Chairman Steve Bishop couldn't be here, um, so he's gonna come next meeting, somebody is gonna come next meeting to speak to that. So number eight, we, the update on New Street Truck Traffic, we can't speak to that because uh, that is. Litigation?
Well, well, because um, we have to meet with Town Council in executive session first to discuss options that you'd have legally. And uh, so Town Council will be at the next meeting, she couldn't attend tonight.
Okay, thank you. Item nine, discussion on use of former senior center.
This could, this could get juicy.
What do you think, yeah?
What do I want to do with it? I don't know, Mike, what's, what's, what's been discussed so far? I know, though, people have ideas, so.
So um, I've had requests from American Legion, requests from, um, I'm trying to think of the name of the store, like Little Precious Moments or something like that, that's on, on one twenty three.
Is that, is that in the, uh, like where the, um, the bagels place is? Is it in the back of that shopping center? Is that place?
It's next to the car wash, I went up to you across from the cemetery.
Right, right.
You should be a florist in there.
Gotcha. Yeah, I know, yeah.
And I know obviously the other thing had been to sell, sell the property. The only issue with selling it is um, behind the senior center is the garage for the school's store all their equipment. Behind that is a shed where the highway department stores equipment and behind that is the salt shed, so we'd have to figure out.
And there's also the town common park, like the parking for the walkable downtown.
Yeah, no, that's a separate parcel.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
But everything else is on that same parcel?
Yes.
Everything that you just mentioned is all in the same parcel for the senior center.
So we'd have to figure out a way. So we'd have to figure out a way to, uh, move. Well, the salt shed, if we can, that, that'd be tough to move. We'd have to look at a garage, our storage space for whatever is in there to retain the school grounds. And, um, Jared would have to look at, uh, a building to replace the shed he has there. And then we would have to somehow get an easement across the property back to that salt shed. So it will take some work if we're gonna sell.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
I just have one quick question. That's Village Commercial.
Yes.
Why can't we subdivide that? Keep the easement on the right-hand side of National Grid for access out there?
We would have to get an easement from National Grid.
So, so we could?
Yeah.
Does the driveway that's next to the Trent Memorial that goes to the parking lot, and that parking lot connects right over to that, those parcels don't touch each other back there?
No, you have the Trent Memorial, CVS on one side, National Grid on the other side.
So the, the road that goes, the path that goes next to Trent Memorial into the back is, that's the, um, National Grid?
National Grid. I think it's just like a way people have been driving and I don't, there's no.
It's the way I've always gone for salt sheds.
So is it, right, uh, how big an issue is it to get an easement from National Grid to use that?
I'll ask him.
And if we, if we get that, then we could subdivide that property and even if we just sell the front portion of it, that's right on one, uh, one twenty-three there, so put that back on the tax law and we still have access to get to the back where the salt shed is there, storages.
And I don't know how much of the consideration it is, but just aesthetically, I would rather, I mean, just, I'm not taking a position on this right now, but I would just think we would rather use that property for something within the new, you know, Village Commercial and try to do something there that enhances the town.
So to your point, we can sell it with restricted.
It's in the Village Commercial zone anyway, right?
Yeah.
Whoever purchased it would need to, they have to do only if they change the building, they can make the Village Commercial compliant? Or if they keep the building the same to that, they can keep it the same?
I mean, they can keep the building the same if they want. I would imagine whoever buys it's gonna tear it down.
Right, because it's a hundred and some years old.
Right.
And it's very disjointed inside to try to use it for any.
Yeah, it'd be nice to really enhance that Village Commercial area.
Could we demolish it first and then sell it?
It may be worth more without the building. Lots of options.
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, that, um, since it's a piece of town-owned property, it just goes out to bid. We can't decide if we want a price for it. It just goes out to bid and the highest bidder will get it?
Well, we would have it appraised and have a.
Write a first refusal, uh?
A, a bottom line, minimal, and then go out to bid. And you can do, um, you can do a couple of options. You can do strictly you're concerned about price or you can do an RFQ where you have something that you would like to see there. And people submit those in a separate envelope. They submit their price proposal. And so you would rank, you know, what you would like to see in different.
So when we put ice cream, when we put ice cream shop in the front. Kevin's ice cream shop.
So I guess that's on our rolls. What's that?
It's gotta have an assessment, right?
Even if it's town owned.
I mean, I don't think we need to make any decisions tonight, but I think it's a good discussion because.
I just say, I, I, personally, I would just like to get that out of the town's hands, especially right on the road that, oh, since all it is is just an old building there, get it back on the tax roll and have somebody use it for a useful purchase in downtown.
I got a funny feeling the gentleman that just did the library and he's doing it, oh, Mansfield Cooperative Bank and, and he's a guy that likes those parcels.
Was that the same?
Yeah. In the meantime, um, I know that, um, Michelle Peterson and the C two Foundation do their, um, annual toy drive and they set up their toy store for one year that was in the, um, in that building. And that was kind of nightmarish for them, but for the last couple of years, they've been using a building over at Larry Valentine's, uh, property to set up their toy store where needy families come in and they get to go and use that. I think that might be a good use for that if that building was gonna be empty, to let them use that for that.
Yeah, we're not gonna have anything ready by, uh, Christmas to sell it, so it'll be.
So I don't know what we have to do to make that happen or how we make that happen.
I'll get a, I'll reach out to her.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay.
Just think that's an opportunity there.
Absolutely.
So on that, I'll talk with, uh, Paul and Nick on the zoning and see, uh, how we could subdivide the property up. And I'll talk to National Grid if we need an easement across.
Okay.
National Grid, that's.
I can't see them saying those.
Well, they have easements all over them.
Right, that's how they, they live, you know, for most of their places, I don't know which.
Did I mention that an ice cream shop? Okay. I'll keep trying.
Next, discussion in our vote regarding budgeting efficiency strategy planning committee. I'd like to table that to next meeting, being Steve's not here. He's a big component of that as well. So eleven of the business talks, not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance. Anybody?
I have nothing.
Town managers report, oh, old business. Preview discussing our vote on building departments, which we'll table in that as well.
Okay.
So under the town manager's report, um, the first thing, I know there's, um, been, uh, some talk around town about the hybrid and electric vehicles that we have. We have two, two hybrid cars and one all electric car. And so we got those in the six charging stations for fifteen thousand total. And those cars are used by the assessors when they go out assessing people's property. Board of Health assistant goes out, she uses one of those cars. Police and fire, when they go to training, they'll use those cars. And, you know, because I know that people look at them like, why do we have three? Well, they cost us six hundred and fifteen dollars each year for insurance. If we didn't have those and we had to pay people whatever the federal rate is now, it's like sixty-something cents a mile, we'd use up to eighteen hundred pretty quick. And also, as part of our plan to become a green community, we had to have a commitment to purchase electric or hybrid vehicles. So that has helped us with that plan. So, I mean, the, it's not like there's a lot of cost to having those vehicles other than the auto insurance. There's not much.
Mike, just, what, what is the background behind the concern with that?
Just, I know, actually, the only thing I ever responded to, I think on Facebook, was someone saying, why does the town have three vehicles? And I did respond back and say, we got them for fifteen thousand plus the charging stations in a grant. And it's a big savings rather than have vehicles that are using gas.
Yeah, I never heard about it.
And even just from a, from a risk management standpoint, like, you, you want to minimize people driving their own vehicles around as much as possible, so.
Insurance, okay.
How old are those cars now?
Um, I'm not sure.
And I guess how long, how long are we expecting them to hold on? And we didn't have them before. What did we do before we had them?
Before, we had gas vehicles, so.
And I just, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, what is the cost gonna be if we go to replace them?
Right.
I think we were using, um, surplus cruisers.
Right. Surplus cruisers, our highway gave up a truck.
Yeah, that Explorer is and things of that nature.
Yeah, I'll check on the age of them.
Right, and we just, it seems like we just, we added three more vehicles to the fleet of vehicles that the town owns. And when it comes time that their useful value was gone, do we go revert back to what we were doing before? Or are we gonna spend money buying brand-new electric vehicles?
Well, as part of the green communities, we'll have to have fuel-efficient vehicles, so hybrids or electric or.
But that's.
Any other departments required? Like police and fire?
We have two hybrids.
Do you?
Yeah.
How do you like them?
They're good. They're really good.
You like them?
Yeah, they're scholars and they're very good.
Better than the, the gas jets?
Yeah, everybody seems to like them. There's no issues. But, you know, to that point, I didn't know, the town manager forgot that we had a, a health, person in the board of health that got in a serious car crash on Mansfield Ave in her own personal vehicle one time, running hammers for the town. And that was a liability.
And the fire chief said the ladder truck is gonna be all-electric, correct?
It's on the shelf at Walmart.
Only if it's, only if it's an ass on the side.
I know I was talking with Ron, Jared and Alec about health insurance. I was thinking, I don't know if I've ever talked much about health insurance. So just to let you know where we have our health insurance from, I, you know, since new members have come on, I wasn't sure if I ever talked to you about it. So we're part of a consortium, um, Southeastern Mass Health Group. And, uh, there's seven organizations, six towns and one, um, collaborative school district that are part of our group. And SMHG for short, it's a joint purchase agreement with all those towns. And, uh, our, our insurance last year went up like, went up five point seven percent. And a lot of the communities were going up eleven percent or more last year, so the group's done pretty well. And in two thousand and eighteen, um, we used Master General Law thirty-two D, section twenty-one, twenty-two. What that was at that time was when that was passed by the state, you actually had to, um, provide, provide the state with information of why you weren't using it. And the select board voted to use this agreement. And what that allowed the, uh, town to do was change our health plan at the time. And, um, we had, had to negotiate with the Public Employee Committee, which is made up of all the unions in town. And, um, as part of that plan, we added deductibles, two hundred and fifty dollars for an individual, seven hundred and fifty for our family. And when we did that that year, um, we had a, we had a savings of a million dollars on our health insurance because of that. And we had to use a portion of the savings as the state required to set up a fund, um, that's used to cover fifty percent of the two hundred and fifty, seven fifty deductible for employees. The inpatient copay of three hundred and seven hundred for our family and the outpatient copay of a hundred and fifty. Also, as part of that, um, we have an opt-out. So if you were on the town's health insurance for previous twenty-four months and you opt out, as an individual, you get fifteen hundred dollars a year. If you opt out of the family plan, it's twenty-five hundred a year. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, with the PEC, Public Employee Committee, PEC, we added an option of a high deductible plan. And that requires a health savings account to go with it. And, um, the town will match fifty percent of your contribution to the health savings account, up to a maximum of a thousand dollars for an individual and two thousand for a family. Very few people have taken that. It really is a good plan, especially for younger people that will have time to build up that health savings account. Because, um, the health savings account can only be used for health-related things. Or if you use it for something that's not health-related, you pay income tax on it and a penalty. But once you're sixty-five, all you, you can use it for anything. You do pay in income tax on it, but no penalty once you're sixty-five.
You still pay income tax?
Yeah, so if you build it up, if you're young and you get in there and hopefully you stay healthy, you don't have a lot of deductibles. It'd be a good way to build, but we haven't, uh, there aren't that many people on that plan. And that, you know, that plan, um, for a family is, uh, one thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And the next plan we have, the Network Blue Deductible that most people are on, is two thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. So there's a savings to both the individual and the town if people would, would take that plan. So we'll have to do more work trying to, uh.
Sell that?
Yeah.
Does the, does the town pay a percentage of the premium?
Yeah, so we have three plans that people can apply for. The Network Blue Deductible is the one with the two fifty, seven fifty. That's what most people have. And then the, the, um, high, uh, plan, high deductible plan with the safety account, the savings account. That is, so those two plans, it's, we pay seventy-five percent and the employees pay twenty-five. Then we have a PPO. We pay seventy, the employees pay thirty of the PPO.
And those are all renewed in July, is that right, along with the fiscal year?
Right. The only ones that are in December are the, um, senior plans, retiring plans.
So budgeting wise, Mike, um, where is the, on what budget line does that come out of? Is that just a line from the town that pays just insurance for the whole town? It doesn't come out of each department? Do they have a line in there for insurance?
It's part of the fixed and shared expenses. On the update on the fishing game, uh, on two thirty-seven Mansfield Ave, um, so they're working to go out to bid on that project. Finalizing their design plans and they said this fall that they are planning on going up to bid. And I did check with them this week. They, they control their leased area only and I don't have the plan, I need to show you. But, um, as far as like Norton kayak, they still can use the property. They, we can have another parking area that their, their clients could park on and go out to the lake. They won't be able to be in the area that is controlled by Fishing Game, but they can certainly walk across there with their kayaks. They just can't store them on the Fishing Game property. Might be a longer walk and whatever, but.
Is there space to, to store them next to, like adjacent to the Fishing, Fishing Game?
Yeah, I've gotta look at their plan again and see where the best place to store them is. But we, I mean, we all land on either side of that Fishing Game.
So there's, there's land, not land, but parking, some parking spots in there too?
Right, we, we could put parking like out in front of the house that's there.
Yeah.
We could easily put some more parking up there.
But the house is owned by Norton, not Fishing Game?
Right, yep.
So the parking lot in front of and behind the house is Fishing Game?
So Fishing Game, as you look at the house, they're gonna put a parking area off to the right.
Okay.
So we would still control up in front of the house.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
As far as that Fishing Game and that whole property at two thirty-seven Mansfield Ave, is that something that we can put on, uh, an agenda item to have more of an in-depth discussion about that? I, I'd just like to make sure that the, the agreement that we're in is a good agreement with Fishing Game in. And just make sure that it's the best use that we have for that piece of property. And just make sure that it's the best use that we have for that piece of property.
Yeah, like a map too, showing boundary lines.
Okay.
We own all behind, all that land that's behind those duplexes, the reservoir, the town owns as well?
All along the line.
Oh, you got it up? Yeah, that's right.
But there's no place along there that you can, from what I've been told, that you can even launch a boat?
Did I not just see the plan for building on those lots?
Um, I don't know if.
I think that's down further, that, that's the FDT overlay that you were talking about.
Yeah, and the shit, there's, the water's too shallow there, right, for anyone to enter anytime.
I think when it was originally brought, the intention was to do a boat ramp and a full water access. And I think shortly thereafter was realized that those, um, those options weren't available. So I, I think I, I know where Roger's leading to. I, I don't know if it makes sense to even, for us to even be involved in that property, that town, without it.
What, what is the gain for the town there, besides being a landlord for that house and being, you know, in agreement with Fishing Game that we now have their parking lot there, that, for what reason, so you could put, you could do a kayak in?
Public access on June, huh? June of the beach, and.
People do use a public, that has been certain, Norton Kayak uses it as a business they've been running for years, camps and other programs that they run through there regularly. I'd hate to see that, um, jeopardized as well.
Oh, yes, it is another option, maybe. Maybe we'll look and see other options.
I just wanna make sure that what we're doing, when we're getting into this with Fishing Game coming in, building a parking lot that Norton Kayak can't use anyway, what are we gaining by doing, being in this agreement to do that?
So you want this on the next agenda and I'll bring all the.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. I think, I think it's a great idea for Roger to have to talk about a little bit more in detail.
Yep, and I'll bring all that to the next meeting.
Who's, who uses the house?
It's rented out. The top floor is rented out.
Okay.
The bottom's vacant.
And so what is Fishing Game want of the property? They can't use a boat ramp?
That's my point.
They, they, they're, um, it's gonna be a launch area for canoes, kayaks, not motorboats.
Small watercraft.
Car top. Car top boats. On the bike trail, um, they're working to finish that up. Hopefully, uh, hey, by the spring it'll be. I don't, I'm not confident they'll be done this fall. They've gotta do, uh, you know, the intersections.
They were close, I mean, they came to a halt.
Right, and they're, they're back now. And, uh, the engineer said, well, it was justified because they can't really see until this time of year. Well, they could've done concrete, right? So they gotta do the crossings. They gotta get the traffic signalization in. So hopefully by the spring. When I was cleaning my office, I did find the newspaper article, um, when town meeting approved setting money aside for the bike trail in 2015. But think about it, the Route 123 project was approved before the bike trail and that just. So it takes a long time, but, um, I know there's a lot of people using it and they like it, so.
It's amazing how many people are on it.
Yep.
They need to get the crosswalk figured out, that done before somebody gets killed.
Well, there'll be, there'll be signalization.
But that's it. I'm just saying, they need to even just do something with the barrels that they have there. Cause people standing in between the barrels just waiting to cross. You can't even see them. They even stop.
People just walk. I mean, they, they don't, they don't slow their heat down approach and just expect the vehicles to stop because they're in a crosswalk.
Right, right.
I don't know whether.
And there's less room for two cars to pass the barrels over, I mean, it will be a bit.
Let's hope it gets done, gets done sooner rather than later. You can, you guys must have seen post calls down there as well, that not a, not a great, not a great situation right now there. The barrels are a terrible solution to that. Trying to get sure some people at least gonna stop and look before they. Yep.
And so what are we waiting for, moving with the barrels? Barriers, just barriers, right?
What are we waiting for to remove the barrels? Um, they've gotta finish, um, doing the concrete.
It's still dirt on either side of it.
Where the town meets the roadway.
Yeah.
And they gotta put up the traffic signals before they can, uh. The way it's designed everywhere, um, where there's a crossing, um, you'll be on the bike trail and you have to go like that to cross the road, so people have to.
You can't just fly.
That's right. They base it so you have to.
The little dirt spot in between that thing is where the signal's gonna go?
That's where the.
They just need to maneuver around this, yeah.
Jog.
The jog.
So they hit that instead of like.
Right.
Just the town report reminded by October 1st, so.
Get your haircut?
You guys, uh, well.
For the picture?
You gotta do the dedication and the photo and the report.
Okay.
So, just so I'm clear, Andrew and Al, what's involved in the dedication? How do you, how do you, how do we determine who we're gonna?
I think the last couple of years, um, we've, um, we've just kind of had some sort of informal.
Someone recommend someone?
Asks, yeah. Does anybody wanna recommend someone? And then, um, you know, and then we would just, you know, discuss it and choose someone. But, you know, usually it's someone, you know, that's, you know, who wanna recognize who did something in the community or some, maybe somebody who passed or.
Maybe we can put that on the agenda to get, so we don't have to hear about it. Let's just do it next meeting if something we've done.
Just do it.
Yeah, for, for.
Well, what Steve can do, you know, he might wanna have some input. I'm gonna have all five of us here.
Do you have anybody in mind?
I do, but I mean, I'd wanna hear what other people have to say. I don't wanna.
Well, you, usually they'll talk about it at a meeting, cause it's usually, right?
Yeah, yeah, just cause we, we don't wanna agree to feel bad that we didn't choose.
Yeah, what about this guy? What about that?
Right, right.
Well, then a lot of times for the families of the people, it's like a surprise.
Right, right.
Books finally come up.
Cause they all, cause everyone gets a book.
And then Steve will write.
Yeah.
Steve will do.
I would take a living.
Do we have to take those boxes to the new town hall? Can we leave them in the old town hall?
I'd say you put it up to her between the two of them.
The chair will write like a, it's like an annual report that you put in there. So it's like part of the section on the select board. And then, um, so that's part of the dedication and then we just do a picture.
And if anybody's looking for a souvenir, they can go to town hall. Well, you can't help it, but maybe.
There's a million of them.
Yeah, you can get a million of them, but whatever.
So on the building projects, um, the COA, they, uh, occupied this past Monday. And so Beth and Sassy and volunteers are unpacking everything right now and trying to get everything set up so that, uh, they can, uh, get everyone out of the old place and over to the new place and start running all the programs in there. And at the town hall, we had 700 crates delivered this week. Everyone has started packing up. Some of the departments have finished. They're gonna move the crates out on the 18th and 19th and then we'll be moving over on the 23rd. MX Consulting, the IT, our IT, uh, company is gonna move all the, uh, computers, uh, over the weekend before the 23rd and get everything set up. And then, uh, I know, um, EDC was looking, I gotta respond to that. They were looking to use it, one of the meeting rooms with all the, um, cameras and everything else for their next meeting, which is, I'm gonna tell them to wait because even, uh, FinCom said, oh, so that Monday we can, uh, do our meetings there and have a hybrid. We gotta wait, make sure everything's working before we commit to, um, commit to that. So hopefully after a week we'll be ready.
Just starting good would be the select board meeting.
Yeah.
He said.
I mean, that's the way, that's, that's how it worked the bugs out.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to do testing and stuff too. You know, just put people in there and nothing works or whatever, so.
So I don't, and so like, I don't even remember off the top of my head where the various conference rooms.
Yeah, there's several rooms in there.
Yeah.
Just a question on the move, I'm sorry. The, uh, town clerk and with the state and, uh, the telephone lines and are those gonna, the.
The T1 line, yeah.
T1 line, is that in process to be moved? Is that gonna?
I know, she had some communication today. She was talking with the IT people. I gotta meet with her tomorrow and find out if there's been any, uh, more movement other than, uh, we're gonna try and do it early.
Yeah. Cause otherwise it'd be in two buildings.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's good that we, I mean, we have, we have the new clerk. That's good. We got that position filled, so.
Well, thank you.
That's huge. Huge.
That's it?
That's it?
All right.
Select board's report, ma'am?
I think I'm the warrant approver. Is that right?
I think so.
I just wouldn't that.
I've never done this before. Um, I approved the warrants as listed in the agenda. And I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion in a second, Denise?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you, everybody.